Okay, I'm pretty sure the camera just beeped and we're live, so. We're in the property subcommittee here on June 5th at 6 o'clock. Salem Derby has stated that he's going to be absent, so it's... Just the two of us. So the first thing that, of course, we only have one item on the agenda, and that's the consideration of disposal of property on Parsons Street. And we have Jessica Allen's recommendations here. I also took a look at the previous pieces of property that the city exercised on Everett Street, and then... There we go, just blanking. I'm gonna have to look it up. It's Everett, and was it the former town hall?
Are you just speaking about the Memorial Building?
Memorial Building, yeah.
Yes, we have some recollection of that.
Salem Memorial Building, yeah, I saw that you were on that too, so...
So is that Old Town Hall is Memorial Building?
That's what it is, yeah. Well, no, different buildings.
Sorry.
The Old Town Hall with the steeple is indeed the Old Town Hall. What was the old municipal building, Town Hall quotation marks, was Memorial Building.
And those are separate?
They're separate. One's on the corner, it's now the massage school.
Oh, okay, yes, I always forget.
That's the massage school, that's Memorial Hall.
Okay. Which was a... Was that a school previously?
It had been an original high school like 1860.
That's what I always think of it as, school. So Memorial Hall is that, okay, great.
1865. Hello?
Hi.
Hi, morning.
Thanks, guys.
And here's a...I only made a few copies, but here are the previous recommendations. Do you have a copy?
I do, and then either. I brought some other...do you have that?
Yeah, I got it, yeah.
Because I printed that up, and I brought some other stuff to share, because I did a little more research on that, um, the idea of affordable housing for artists. And actually, there is a developer who I...who is involved, and I did more research on it, so I provided some of that, and I did contact them. So I can...in order to be succinct and not ramble, I wrote a little piece, but also in case somebody wasn't here, you can pass it on. But there's more info to share with the other board members.
All right.
And you guys are interested too.
Thank you.
I did leave a voice message today, so I don't know what happens. I'll follow up with them and direct them towards you guys, or however.
Okay. Well, why don't you go ahead and start, because I was just gonna talk about some of the previous, you know, dispersals of property and...
Sure. Um, I'll pass these along to you guys, and you can keep a copy, and then I don't...if we need extras for Salem or whoever else. I mean, basically, the other members can read this, but, um, you know, as you guys both, you know me very well by now, my opinions, um, I really think that I mostly agree...I'll just paraphrase what it says here, but I do mostly agree with the recommendations that Jessica Allen made, and knowing the property and, you know, the cost-benefit analysis. The one request that I'd really like to make, in light of this information that I found about the possibility of affordable housing specifically made available to artists, is that in the requirements for the proposal, in the way that she identified ways to give higher rankings to certain things, if we could, um, make one of the requirements be to address affordable housing for artists, because this is identified in the master plan document as priority, and I know that that's just been a tough priority to reach, because nobody knows quite how to approach it. Um, and I feel like I've now reached out to this group, Art Space, which is a nationwide developer. Um, they started in Minnesota, I gave you their mission and history, and then sort of the FAQs on this most recent project they did in East Harlem. They're nationwide, they're coast-to-coast, and I feel like it's a really great opportunity. And I also think they might be interested in One Ferry, you know, that could be a larger space for them, and really pull together the whole area with, um, you know, the development along the backside of East Works, et cetera. That's sort of a really beautiful triangle, that if it comes together, I think it could really boost potential there. So if we could add to the requirements, um, specific, um, you know, bonuses for affordable housing for artists, we'd meet some more of our priorities for that. And then also, I put in here, you know, I don't know how this process works, but in terms of that one acre parcel that Jessica mentioned allotting for green space, I would like to see it set aside by the city, separate from the sale, before the sale, so that it can't be used as leverage for the sale, the purchase of the property, because I could see a developer coming in and saying, "Well, I'm willing to pay this price, but I want more of that land." And then we won't get the green space that we drastically need. So I don't quite know protocol on that. I know in the agenda item, it's listed as two separate parcels. I don't know quite if that's the Lincoln Street or the what, but I would love to see that one acre split off and designated green space for longevity, and the Parsons parcel be for sale, so that that's just, green space is coming. And I do favor rezoning for neighborhood business, because we need businesses in New City, and we certainly have the density, but we're losing actual sites for businesses to enter. Everything is being converted to residential, um, and that one swath of Parsons is like the last neighborhood business zone that exists over there. I don't know what that means for cost or process again, but it still allows us to have residential use and then opens up other possibilities. So that's sort of, that's in the nutshell of what's in here. Support the documents for that.
Okay, well, just to address the zoning issue, I do believe that the last ordinance subcommittee, we approved on a 3-0 vote to move forward with the, uh, going forward to, again, to the city planner and everybody proposing that the property be rezoned to neighborhood business. So that's in the works as we speak. So that's kind of a little bit separate with what we're doing tonight. I mean, tonight, we're really just looking at whether or not we're going to move forward and give the mayor permission to dispose of, I can say dispose, to sell, you know, to sell the property. So, but, uh, thank you. I mean, that's...the other thing that, when I had started, and I think you might have just been walking in at the time, I was just talking about some of the previous buildings with Memorial, and looking at, a little bit about the process and the guidelines, and what we're actually doing versus what the mayor's doing. And it's my understanding that, you know, we move forward with our recommendation, and then the mayor is the one who actually sets, develops the RFP, and can set, you know, the final restrictions and stuff. We can make restriction, or we can, you know, throw out a restriction. I'm just looking at the, here we have recommendations, but a lot of them were, you'll see the minimum bid, and then you'll see sale guidelines. So there's, they're more recommendations than saying that this has to be, has to be done. So one of my concerns is, at least in the subcommittee, yeah, is how much, you know, we're actually going to, you know, before we move this forward to the full committee, if we set too many restrictions, we're kind of potentially even dooming it in going forward to the full committee before it even gets, you know, potentially to the mayor. So one of the things that I'm thinking about tonight is, I'm very concerned, as I've expressed before, it's June now, and we're doing only one full committee meeting per month. Last night, I was going to set a public, I thought we had actually put it on, on for a public hearing, and then our city clerk told us, "No, it's actually, it doesn't go to a public hearing, we can just report it out and make a motion during the report on the subcommittee report." So we're good to go on, to move on this at our next meeting, which is in July. So I'm just, again, concerned, you know, we need to kind of get it out of subcommittee and get it to the full council, and obviously, they can put additional restrictions on it, or they can be discussed in the full council too. So you were gonna process though about the RFP?
In terms of the process, as I recall, because we did have some differences with the mayor, as to what we had proposed and what the mayor had proposed, and my recollection was there had to be a joint meeting of minds on the two proposals, on what we, what the council proposed and what the mayor proposed in the, in the RFP. It couldn't be the mayor rewriting the council's words, and it couldn't be us saying, "We're gonna do this," and the mayor, if the mayor had a different opinion, then it doesn't go to the RFP. So it's a mutual process, as I recall.
Sure.
And I think there may have been a legal opinion that was asked for in that process, we can research that.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. But like, that's what I'm saying about putting too many restrictions on it.
In terms of restrictions on the sale of the property, there really should be as few restrictions as possible. If there are restrictions, they should be very directed toward what the desires of the community are for that parcel. If you're gonna have an historic preservation restriction, it will turn away a lot of bidders.
But it will bring in the kind of bidders that we want, and the kind of creation...we have identified that as being an anchor of the community. I think it's important.
But what we run into also is with the language, future developers to preserve the historic character of the building.
It's pretty vague, actually.
I completely agree, 100%. You know, I'm in agreement with this, but it is fact. So what does that actually mean? And similarly, I, as I've expressed previously too, I've seen buildings that have been converted down, I work in Hartford, Connecticut, and you see these beautiful old brick buildings, and they're suddenly solar glass on the sides and copper. They're gorgeous. I mean, they've done, they've updated them, they've done everything they needed to do, making them handicapped accessible, but you still have that integrity of the building. So it's one of those things of, yes, I agree that this is important, but, you know, how much water does it actually, actually hold? And again, by overly restricting and trying to prescribe it, we run into those potentials of turning a buyer away.
Personally, I think it's a timeline to put full historic restrictions on the building because of examples like utilizing solar energy. You know, that takes an impact on the exterior facade and impacts its historic nature. It's something that we can all appreciate is to use solar power. And so with full historic restrictions, you very well could eliminate that.
Right. And that's not something that, you know, we're considering at this time. It's just, again, looking at the recommendations, you know, as they are, Councilman Derby had weighed in and basically said, you know, he, he's ready to, he's not here tonight, but he would be ready to approve it as is, as the city planner, Jessica Allen, has proposed to, so...
Yeah, and I think it's just a matter of making sure the building isn't razed, from the perspective of a lot of people who've spoken of, just that it's not completely taken down, and that, I mean, I agree, because some of the efficient, you can't meet certain efficiency standards with those historical, I went through that with right up here in my own house, you just can't. Single-pane windows aren't good for anybody.
And I think that, you know, if we're talking about being vague, require future developers to preserve the historic character of the building, pretty much signifies that it's not going to be razed.
Yeah, and I think that does sort of the job that, that's what we're asking, is as long as it's somehow, it saves it from being completely torn down, and we still see it, you know, like, um, with East Street, the old school there, which is now residential, you can still see, you can see the character of the building, but yet it's a completely new reuse. So it's on, or something else.
Kind of all the way towards the end, right?
Yeah, I love driving by that building, never been inside, but you can see...
I've been inside, the upper floor, I mean, it has a wonderful view out over the Oxbow.
Like the view from the attic of Parsons. I mean, that's gorgeous up there, and to be able to get up there and maybe add some skylight or whatever, I think it's really nice to see that facade and then bring it up to speed with the modern world, really.
If you could please forgive me, because I think that I definitely missed some of the meetings and information on this. My name is Kurt Armbruster. I am a builder. And, um, and we also live Main Ave, which is right next to Parsons, so, so I have some interest in what it becomes, and, uh, so I'm trying to catch up a little bit. Now, with your proposal of the affordable housing for artists, is that top to bottom, is your intention that it would be solely artists in there, or would there be like a floor that's designated for them?
Well, this is just going on a model, and that you'll see at the back of this, and, you know, take it home and do some research, but this Art Space organization, this PS109 is in East Harlem, it's just one of their recent ones that they brought online. They do provide, it is 100% artist-based, um, but, you know, you can read on there what's an artist, what's not, that's why I attached the FAQ. They do usually provide some kind of a community space, whether it's a gallery or a community center. And again, there's our master plan document that the city has on file identifies affordable live workspaces, so it's much like East Works, but this is sort of subsidized, it's, this model, if it's possible, is subsidized and allows the developer to access federal housing, federal low-income housing tax credits, which is what the 69 Parsons Project is doing as well. And you sell your credits to investors in order to fund the project, that's sort of that model. So in this model, if we could go with this recommendation, then yes, because I also think that creative individuals bring, you know, a lot of innovation to the neighborhood, and could hopefully just help lift us, because I really think we're teetering right here. And I think positive, and I'm very invested in the neighborhood and in my property. I'm at 61, 63. I'm here, I'm perpendicular, so I'm that big white house right at Main Ave, Parsons. Yeah. So, um, I'm really, I just, I feel like with Parsons Village coming in, Parsons School property and what happens there really could balance out what's going on in the neighborhood, and then bring a lot of potential to Ferry Street, and like I said, sort of close this triangle. If we're gonna develop the back of East Works, I could envision the boardwalk going straight across the pond again. You know, each family sponsor a board, and we have the boardwalk, and then people can walk over, hear music on Friday nights, and walk back home, just like, you know, like it used to be, but in a, in a new way, that I think, we're right there, we're right there. And that, I might be dreaming big.
No, I'm laughing, because I love it, it's great.
It's so doable, and we're so within reach, but if we just pack that lot with houses and nothing else, really, I'm pretty passionate about it. I'm trying, I'm trying to find, you know, the solution here, but I need the mayor's support and the city council's support. And I know I'm one person, but working hard. I need builders who know what it takes to turn these buildings around, you know.
That one would take a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot, I've been in there, but, but it's gorgeous, and it has the potential, it's really cool.
It really goes, yeah.
Well, I'm certainly with you on the Lower Mill Pond there too. I mean, I would love to see the bridge go back across, that would be...
There's pictures somewhere of that, yes.
I didn't even know there was.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
The beers, he's still...
You can still, those things sticking out of the water, that's the, and actually...
There, my mom told me about it.
If you go down Federal Street, just behind the houses on Federal, there's actually a greenway that runs behind those houses, and there's a few properties that have squeaked back into it, but that greenway was a pathway that people used to take to work, go out their house.
And they used to deliver like milk and eggs and all that kind of stuff, too.
Come on over sometime, and I can show you pictures and do that.
Why did they give them?
Well, it just faded over time, I don't wanna hijack it.
As I say, I think the Upper Mill Pond, there was a bridge that went across to Nottetuck Park, and that was, I believe, was burned down. And that sometimes happens with bridges like that, people don't want people walking anymore behind their homes, so you get that, but...
Yeah, there's sort of fire, and mills closing, and all these things, it's just things have dilapidated, but we're really situated in a time that I think we can bring it back, you know. It's not gonna be immediate, but there are certain steps you take now that help things happen in the future. They're not easy, I said that, I know they're not easy. They're not always gonna be favorable decisions, you know, but you kind of have to take a leap of faith and stand up when you can see the potential, and that's what I'm doing, I'm sort of dreaming big.
So just some of the other areas, again, I think that the city planner's recommendations, with the previous meetings, we've tried to address a lot of the concerns, and similarly, even tonight, we were saying about splitting the parcel 330 feet back from Parsons Street where the fence line cuts in. Again, we're maintaining that one acre, that's part of the recommendation, you know, so that's number four in the recommendations. Again, and as you said about that being done beforehand, that would be part of the decision, or to my understanding, would be part of the RFP, if you will, that that is, you know, the separate, or the, the RFP would only be for the lot in the front, including the building, not the back 330 feet. Number five, proposals would provide barrier-free accessible adaptable residential units would be ranked higher, which would be much-needed housing type as determined in the housing needs assessment, regional housing plan. Proposals that provide one to two units of affordable housing should be ranked higher. Proposals which incorporate separate publicly available community space, possibly in the basement, would also be ranked higher. There was a lot of input about still having some community space within the building, or wouldn't it be great if there was, you even brought in the idea about having some type of like an incubator space or something like that, that's not specifically here, but again, keeping some community space. And then again, rezoning, consider rezoning the parcel to neighborhood business. Again, that is part of a process, but it's already gone through the ordinance subcommittee, and I'm not sure if Mr. Derby, Councilman Derby, has set a meeting yet with the planning board to move forward with, with those recommendations. So we do have a number, number of things in play.
Just a practical note, procedural. Number one, require a minimum bid of 450 was Jessica's recommendation. How are we able to do that without the mayor ordering appraisal on the property?
It says that we have to, there?
My understanding is that, you know, what was handed out as disposition of surplus property, April 2000, legal opinion, essentially, to summarize it, says that we could use the assessed value as a bid value, that would be like a million, right? No one's gonna pay a million one, and certainly go along with any restrictions on the property. So that doesn't seem, so the only other way to get a different price, I think, can have it be a legal process, would be to have an appraisal. I just wonder if the mayor has done that yet. Certainly, we haven't been made provision to an appraisal, or been given a copy of an appraisal, or even been told that there will be one.
Right.
So I think that's a procedural step that the committee should talk to the mayor about and see where she's at.
Okay. And city planner Jessica Allen sent her regret, she wasn't able to meet tonight. I suggested maybe reconvening for next Wednesday or Thursday when she was available, but she said, "Well, you know, it's, go ahead and have the meeting tonight, and then if there's any questions, she might be able to respond back to them." And we move forward in that manner.
You know, in terms of meeting, I, I meet every other day, whatever the requirements are, every week, as far as postings are concerned, this is expeditious, so it's possible.
Absolutely.
What's the soonest possible for a plan to be in place?
Well, just looking at the timelines, whether, you know, we would make a vote on it tonight, or, again, based on this information that we'd have to, before we require a minimum bid, have an appraisal, reconvening next week, the next city council meeting isn't until the first Wednesday of July, so at that meeting, we could move forward for a full city council vote on authorizing the mayor to dispose, or to sell the property.
Is that when, so the RFP is in place by that meeting, or the RFP then comes out for that?
Comes out for that.
Okay.
The RFP would come out for that, so...
Right. So again, that's why, we don't wanna end up being in a position where we're spending another 30, potentially $45,000 for the year to heat the building next year. And then again, I'm not sure what timelines are on somebody who might be deciding to purchase the building, but they might not be as eager to do it in, you know, December or January, when...
With them, I think.
Right, and then again, they can just wait until the spring to see if there's other bids or lower bids. So then, it sounds like the next appropriate step would be to talk to the mayor and...
Not the appraisal. Although I'm certainly in favor of preserving back of property for open space, uh, so dropping the line, I would be in favor of, we must just figure out exactly where we want to drop the line. Jessica had a suggestion. I'm sorry?
It would be, I think, within that, well, it all depends, that 330-foot mark, is that from the street? Is that from the sidewalk back?
Back from Parsons Street.
So I think it gives you about...
Where the fence line cuts. And I think they're talking about where the fence line, the fence, I'm on now on the Main Avenue side of the parcel, and the fence then, you know, cuts back, I believe, and then goes back out, is that...
It's fairly standard, it goes straight back. I didn't understand what her fence reference is. It changes where the old pool is.
That's where it goes.
That's, and that's all the way at the back, it's a pool. Where's a pool? There's a pool, there's an old pool there. But that's...
It's a stone.
But that's about near the roundabout? I think she put one back.
Well, again, I mean, if we're gonna meet with the mayor, we can certainly schedule another subcommittee meeting for next Wednesday or Thursday when city planner is available, and she might be able to better define exactly where...
I can't imagine that where the roundabout is, is a full acre. That seems, I think, when we were standing...
It would be the roundabout in any parcel, any parts to the left and right on the Lincoln.
Is that an acre?
What, 250 feet by 250 feet?
An acre's 200 and change, plus 200, times 200 and change.
So that's pretty much where the pool, corner of the pool is. So parking is all, basically, all that concrete behind there.
Well, parking for, as I say, there's two things. She was saying parking for the open space would be on Lincoln.
Yep.
And then the parking, the idea of the 330 feet that she's describing gives about 1,800 square feet to the actual parcel with Parsons Street building, which then would allow enough for the parking spaces or whatever was put in. If it's, I think the 1,800 feet would also include if you did have a mixed, mixed use.
Yeah, there's more. Neighborhood business zone, it needs like 25 feet of setback.
There's a lot more parking required, yeah, exactly. Required, based on the square footage of the business.
So it's a small green space, but it's better than nothing, is sort of my take.
So the plan is then to, I'll contact the mayor this week, see about the assessment, contact the city planner.
Your appraisal.
The appraisal, and, you know, the assessment value. That's not gonna happen, and then...
I don't think we can work with that figure for sales price.
Right. And then I'll see about reposting for next Wednesday or Thursday.
Wednesday, I know we have finance, but something, we'll meet after that.
Yeah, this'll be a lot shorter, let's just see.
It can be good for everyone who's here, now, whether it's Wednesday or Thursday.
Right. Thinking 7:30?
I agree, that's fine with me. I mean, we could do, by, on the 11th, it would be 7:30. On the 12th, it could be 6:00 or 7:00.
We'll stick with the, excuse me, stick with the Wednesday, we'll do 7:30.
Exactly. We love having public input, so.
We'll be happy to be here.
And always in here, the city's 7:30?
Well, we can't, as I say, we can't guarantee it'll be in here, but probably, yeah, we Let me just double-check, uh, let's see, make sure I have Wednesday and Thursday correct She says she's available either next Wednesday or Thursday, of next week, so. All right. Any other further comments?
Do you think maybe I should share this with the mayor and the council? Yeah, I didn't know who would be here tonight, so I'll also just throw it as a PDF to everybody. Because Councilman McCoy did respond like, "Okay, but we need a developer," and that's how I found Art Spaces. I was like, "All right, I'm on that."
Great.
So, okay.
Entertaining motion was adjourned?
Removed.
All in favor?